Had to hit it loud tonight. I call this meeting the Williamsburg James City County School Board to order. Can I get a certi- motion for certification and closed session, please?
I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge of the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discuss only public business matters lawfully exempt from the open meeting requirements as stated in the Virginia law, and then only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
There a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Serza?
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Ms. Minor.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye. That brings us to 3.02 pledge of allegiance, and so I signed about ninety-six certificates tonight, and so I am going to randomly select one of them to come lead this pledge of allegiance. And so I figure we'll, uh, I figure we'll start with the As, which would be Abby Larson. All right, here's some mic. Abby is a sophomore at Jamestown High School and is the daughter of Craig and Ruth Larson. Abby has been and I'm sure will continue to be a frequent attendee at school board meetings to pick up certificates for her swimming exploits, so let us all stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Larson. Appreciate your good sense of humor there. Ms. Serza, could you take the roll, please?
Dr. Beers.
Here.
Ms. Cook.
Here.
Ms. Hummel.
Here.
Ms. Minor.
Present.
Mrs. Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Young.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here. 4.01 approval of the agenda. We have several changes we're gonna make to the agenda tonight with the board's approval. First, first, we're going to change, swap the order of 6.02 school spotlight and 6.01, we're gonna move the school spotlight to in front of board recognitions. We are gonna pull 8.02 financial report and monthly bills and payroll from the consent agenda and make that 9.06, I'll get to 9.05 in a second, and we are going to pull 8, 811 retire policy GDC compensatory leave to 9.07, and we are going to add purchase requests for Title I supplemental literacy intervention materials in the amount of seventy-three, two sixty-two, sixty-three as 9.05. We discussed that at our work session, but we neglected to put that on the agenda for the meeting, so with, with that, is, can I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the agenda as amended by you this evening.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Ms. Serza?
Ms. Minor.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye, thank you. 5.01 announcements and superintendent's report. First, I would just like to make an announcement that we had a special meeting of the James City County School Board scheduled for 5:30 to review the compensation for the school board, and we had to cancel that as we reviewed the statute. We could only do that if we were electing two board members. We thought that was, it was just one, but statute said that we can't do it this year, we had to do it next year, so appreciate that. Dr. Constantino.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, good evening, everyone. Spring is just around the corner, hopefully, which means it's spring musical time. Please visit the division websites and the websites of the high schools and calendars for information about all of our school productions at the high school, the middle school level, and ticket information. These productions are always very high quality, and I encourage our community to come see our very talented students on stage. Lafayette High School will host Bolt, Being Outstanding Leaders Together, against drugs and alcohol, on April sixteenth from nine AM to four PM. Bolt is a free youth leadership event for students in grades six through eight, and breakfast and lunch will be provided. To register, visit wjccschools.org and click on the Bolt slide on the homepage. @WJCCInnovates is a division-sponsored Twitter account that highlights 21st century learning in our schools. Recent tweets focused on students at Rawls Bird Elementary using spiral balls to learn and understand robotics, Lafayette High School students applying calculus to write code to print three-D structures, and JB Blatant Elementary fifth grade students using blue-screen technology to record angle art descriptions. I encourage our families to follow their school accounts for quick access to important information, but also to follow other accounts such as @WJCCSchools and @WJCCInnovates for a broader picture of the great things happening in our schools. Click on the WJCC on Twitter link of the homepage of wjccschools.org for an ever-evolving list of Twitter accounts. Those are all the announcements I have for tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Constantino. Do any board members have any announcements tonight? That takes us to 6.02 school spotlight. DJ Montague Elementary.
Good evening, Mr. Kelly, School Board members, and Dr. Constantino. I'm Kathy Vasquez, the principal of DJ Montague Elementary School, and I thank you for the opportunity to tell you about our Paws to Read program. The goals of literacy instruction are not only for students to learn to read and read to learn, but also to encourage a joy of reading and develop lifelong readers. Like most skills, the more you practice, the better you become. Reading is no exception. For reluctant and struggling readers, this is not always easy, but Artist Hartney and her two-year-old Labrador Retriever Ginny visit Mrs. Wood's first grade class each week to provide students with a unique opportunity to practice reading. The main objective of Paws to Read program is to provide a relaxed and dog-friendly atmosphere which allows students to practice the skill of reading. Many children struggle with reading and feel self-conscious when reading to others. All threats of being judged are put aside when the child sits down next to Ginny. Reading improves because the child is practicing the skill of reading, building self-esteem, and associating reading with something positive. Improving the child's skill of reading is just one of the benefits of the program. Reading to therapy dogs builds excitement about reading. Most children naturally love animals and are positively motivated as they sit by and read to a calm and gentle dog. While the program is geared to helping children, there are benefits for the handlers, too. It gives them a chance to give back to the community by helping children become better readers, better students, and more productive citizens. In the words of Ginny the trainer, "There are so many people that struggle, and they could all use some Ginny time. She just wags her tail and never offers a single criticism." Total acceptance, I believe that's something invaluable that Ginny gives to all of them. Unfortunately, neither Mrs. Wood nor Ginny were available to be here tonight, but we have a video that captures Ginny and Mrs. Wood's students in action. But before we show you the video, I would like to introduce Jack Horspool and Evangel Herbert, who will tell you about their experience with Ginny.
Good evening, Dr. Constantino and members of the school board. My name is Jack Horspool. I like to read to Ginny. This week I read a few chapters from Midnight on the Moon. I think Ginny likes the books. Sometimes she sits on my foot when I read. It kind of tickles a little bit, but I know she's listening to me. Please enjoy the video, visit to our classroom and meet Ginny.
Good evening, Dr. Constantino and members of the school board. My name is Evangel Herbert, and I am a student in Mrs. Wood's first grade class. Jenny is a good service dog. I have the slight fear of dogs, but Jenny makes me feel calm. I like to read with Ginny because she is so quiet and I feel like she actually listens to me. She's a really calm dog. Jenny is making a difference at DJ Montague, and we love her. Please sit back, relax, and enjoy the show. [laughter] [applause]
Good evening, Dr. Constantino and all the WJCC School Board members. I'm Sarah Wood, a first grade teacher at DJ Montague Elementary. First, I want to start with saying I think that first grade is probably the most critical year where students learn to read. They need a lot of practice, and so I bring a lot of volunteers into my classroom to help students read one-on-one as much as they can. I have an America Reads volunteer, also some William &amp; Mary's students and parent volunteers, but their most favorite volunteer is Ginny the therapy dog. Ginny is a two-year-old yellow lab, and she comes with her trainer and owner, Artist Hartney. So Ginny visits our classroom once a week for an hour. The students take turns reading one to two books with her, so they get to spend about ten minutes with her. They absolutely love it, and you'll hear more from them in a few minutes. But we met Ginny and Miss Hartney last spring. She reached out to us and explained the program to us, and we were very excited here in first grade to bring Ginny to the school. Ginny is from Therapy Dogs International, and she's training to work in schools after a tragedy, so she'll be there to comfort students if there was a tragedy at a school. So it's a win-win situation for everybody. The kids love having her in our classroom, and Ginny is learning how to work in a school. So listen to what a few of my students have to say about reading with Ginny.
I read with Ginny. I sit down and start reading a book that I like. I like reading because Ginny makes it fun. I am proud about my reading.
Just as a side note, Mrs. Wood will continue spreading the joy of reading this summer on her Books on Bikes program, which was funded by the Williamsburg James City County Education Foundation. She will be traveling through DJ neighborhoods, riding a bike, and distributing books for the students to read over the summer. So thank you very much for allowing us to spotlight DJ Montague.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. I think I was there that, Ginny was there that day when we went to do the Education Foundation and get the grants, and so it's, it's a great program, great thing, great thing for the kids, and it's good for the puppy. 6.01, board recognitions. I think, do we have any board recognitions tonight?
Just a couple.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. We have a number of individuals to recognize this evening. Let's begin by recognizing the 2015-16 4A Girls, VHSL 4A Girls Swim and Dive State Champions, Jamestown High School. This is the third consecutive year that the team has earned this title. I would ask now that Coach Molly Sandling, please join us at the podium to announce the swimmers. As your, as your name is called, please come up front and remain for a team photo.
We're starting with the girls. Ashley Adams. Katherine Burrows. Caroline Cherry. Hannah Clymer, and Hannah Clymer is also the state champion in the 200 Freestyle Relay and the 400 Freestyle Relay. Haley Downer. Katie Duff. Elizabeth Folsom. Carissa Hardy. Victoria Hardy. Abby Larson. Abby Larson is also the state champion in the 50 Freestyle, the 100 Freestyle, the 200 Freestyle Relay, and the 400 Freestyle Relay. Genevieve Meadows. Allison Moose. Jackie Morris. Lauren Morris. Carmen Aquendo. Abigail Polansky. Casey Reeves. Carter Catherine Rolay. Casey Schmidt. Emily Sharp. Sunlee Simons. Jill Smith. Anna Song. Nikki Tyler. Lorna Van Geem. Michaela Van Wicklen. Joelle Vareb, who's also the state champion in the 100 Butterfly, the 100 Breaststroke, the 200 Freestyle Relay, and the 400 Freestyle Relay. Maggie Vineyard. Angelique Voe. Grace Williams. Laney Williams. Madeline Williams. Margaret Williams, who is also, Margaret is also the state champion in the 400 Freestyle Relay and the 200 Freestyle Relay, and Madison Wood.
The team was named the 2015-16 VHSL 4A Boys Swim and Dive State Champions. Gentlemen, please come up front as Coach Sandling announces your name and remain for a team photo.
Caleb Akins. Christopher Bailey. Helen Bayer. Ilya Boyko. Colin Bowle. Ryan Bowle, and Ryan is also a state champion in the 400 Freestyle Relay. Zachary Clevenger. Daniel Dunkuski. David Dunkuski. Jack DeLeone, and Jack is also the state champion in the 200 Freestyle Relay. Griffin Doggett. Aiden Francis. Thomas Gaunt. William Graham. Thomas Hallett. Brett Harlow. Calvin Hart. Mason Colda. Colin Meadows. Julian Montez Martinez. Nicholas Neubauer. Peter Polansky. Spencer Rice. Jared Shaner. Jimmy Sharp. Corey Scheidler, and Corey is also the state champion in the 200 Freestyle Relay and the 400 Freestyle Relay. Trevor Simmons. Connor Sokolowski. Carter Tenney. Ben Van Tessel. Ben is also the state champ in the 200 Freestyle Relay and 400 Freestyle Relay. Sam Van Tessel. Josh Visser. Taylor Watson. Luke Wilder. Jack Williams. Colin Wright. Colin Wright is also the state champ in the 50 Freestyle, the 100 Freestyle, the 200 Freestyle Relay, and the 400 Freestyle Relay. And Nikki Zhang. Thank you, Dr. Constantino and members of the school board.
Thank you, and congratulations, Coach. We would also like to recognize two students for their individual state accomplishment. Jordan Willis was Jamestown's, from Jamestown, was named the Boys Long Jump 4A State Champion. Is Jordan here? And Warhills Morgan Whaley was named the 4A State Champion for the 100 Yard Butterfly. It's always an honor to recognize and celebrate fine teachers with our, within our school division. Each year through the Teacher of the Year program, the division spotlights one outstanding teacher from each WJCC school. The teachers exemplify the core values of individualism, integrity, innovation, accountability, and collaboration. Nominated by their peers, these dedicated individuals are identified because of their exceptional abilities in the classroom and strong commitment to teaching. It is my privilege to congratulate the following teachers for being named Teacher of the Year for their school, and if they would come up to be recognized and also remain for a group photo. From Bright Beginnings, Sarah Sams. Sarah?
From DJ Montague. From Blatant Elementary School. From James River Elementary School. I just happened to show up in Ms. Meadows' classroom yesterday, and I can tell you firsthand why she is the Teacher of the Year. The kindergartners were, we had a ball. From Matoka Elementary School. Andrea Freeland. From Norwich Elementary School. From Rawls Bird Elementary School. From Stonehouse Elementary School. From Berkeley Middle School. From Hornsby Middle School. From Tueneo Middle School. From Jamestown High School. From Lafayette High School. Finally, from War Hill High School.
These outstanding teachers will also be recognized next month at a more formal event, and I would also add, Mr. Chair, members of the board, that that, that event for the teachers is completely sponsored by the Superintendent's Business Advisory Council, and we thank them for their, their effort and support of our teachers, and congratulations again to our teachers, and thank you for all that you do. Mr. Chair, these are all the recognitions for this month. We will certainly have more at our regular meeting in April.
More as in more than this, or more recognitions?
More recognitions.
The, yeah, the Teacher of the Year ceremony, I always look forward to that. The, yeah, the Teacher of the Year ceremony, I always look forward to that event. It's always one of the, one of the highlights of the year. That brings us to 7.01 citizens' comments. Dr. Beers, you want to wait until the crowd settles a little bit before we continue? Go ahead.
It is at this point in our meeting where citizens are invited to address the board. Those citizens desiring to speak have submitted speaker cards to the clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. These speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their names for the record, and direct their comments to the Chair of the Board. It is the Board's interest and desire that all comments are heard and respected. Hence, the citizens are asked not to engage in applauding, verbal outbursts, or any other kind of demonstrations during the presentations. Personal matters are not considered in public meetings, therefore, the Board requests that all speakers refrain from making references to specific individuals in any form or fashion. Though the Board does not respond to your comments, your comments are heard and appreciated. Each speaker is allocated three minutes to make their presentation, and the Board asks that you respect this time limitation. Also, please be reminded that no time may be yielded to another speaker. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines will be greatly appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My directions are done.
Thank you, Dr. Beers, Mrs. Cook.
Jay Everson.
Dr. Constantino, Board, I won't talk about James Blair tonight. I do, I do want to make one comment, though, about these two speakers from DJ Monigue. They are school board's delight. Short, respectful, and coherent. You can't beat it with a stick. What I wanted to talk about, though I know it's been deferred to next year, I want to talk about the compensation. I've been thinking about this, and you guys gave me the opportunity for once to put my position forward, because I think it applies to the Board Supervisors also. You know, you think about what you're responsible for. Tens, if not hundreds of millions of dollars in capital buildings. Probably the largest employer in the area with 1,600 to 1,700 employees. You're responsible for nine-digit budgets. And from an outsider looking in, you also oversee the Byzantine bureaucratic maze known as the central office. All due respect, I'm sorry. I was thinking about this, and this is a lot of responsibility. For $5,000 and $6,000 a year? You know, there are a lot of people, I met a person, I talked to a person just recently who was thinking about, you know, running for the open seat in Powhatan. But independent businessman, he's got a small business. $5,000, $6,000, he can't afford to leave his business. The Board only has one person in the for-profit sector. That would be you, Mr. Kelly, who works for a company which is very civic-minded and gives you the ability to have some flexibility for the stuff during the day. But small business people can offer an awful lot. I can remember back 30 years ago, it's hard to believe, I still, I didn't have gray hair then, and I was in the restaurant business, and I stopped hiring kids from Lafayette. Half of them couldn't spell their school, and they never came to work on time. You know, they could, they go to school, there's no consequence if they're late, they wouldn't dress in their uniform, because they could wear whatever they want. And it seems to me that if you have a salary structure set up where small business people who can bring these kind of perspective to the schools would be advantageous. And I don't know what the number is, but I think really at a minimum, Chair 25, $30,000. $22,500 for the Vice Chair, $20,000 for your Board members. It sounds like a lot of money, but you guys have an awful lot of time, have an awful lot of responsibility. And I think the citizens owe these you folks a great debt. You do a lot of work. I don't agree with all the stuff you do. That's okay, but I don't think there's anybody here who isn't doing it with the best of faith. And I would, you now have a year to think about what I just said. I would appreciate it if you at some point in time would consider a major salary increase. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Everson.
You're welcome.
Tinsley Goat.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to comment on the current CIP process. It appears that this Board's participation in this process has been completed, at least for this cycle, but I believe that the parents, children, and general citizens of this area require and deserve a better explanation of the whole sequence to date. I would suggest that, at best, we have one or more individuals and/or systems that have failed in this process. To review for the record, the LHS Athletic Boosters filed a well-written request for additions to the CIP, including a description and rationale for each of the three projects that was formally submitted to this Board at the December meeting. At that point, these items were added to the CIP for the year. Then several months later, we hear that a committee of the Planning Commission has returned the requests to the school board because of a lack of ranking of the projects. According to the chairman in the last meeting, this request came in so late that it precluded a working session that would have allowed all Board members to offer their input. Was this a new process implemented by the Planning Commission this year? Was it unknown that a ranking of projects was required? According to the Planning Commission, every other agency submitted completed applications, including rankings, in this process. And in the end, how were the projects ranked, and why? Evidently, the ranking was done within the Superintendent's Office, and the list resubmitted under cover letter from the Chair, but as far as I can tell, that's all the information that we have. Next, we hear that the Planning Commission Subcommittee met and deliberated on the various submissions by county agencies. The LHS projects wound up at the bottom of this list because of insufficient information, including lack of any written description about the projects. What happened to the written description submitted by the LHS boosters? Why didn't the Superintendent's Office either know or care enough to include this narrative and properly complete the CIP application? As I stated, at best, we have a serious breakdown in the understanding and/or execution of basic county processes. At worst, we have Board leadership and a Superintendent's Office that really had no intention of promoting these projects in the first place. I would suggest that the representations made in this process lead to that, would lead a rational person to that conclusion, and in the absence of full and transparent accountability in this, some people might lean toward that as the full explanation of reality. I hope that the efforts of the LHS boosters and hundreds of other parents and students at Lafayette doesn't become so much water under a bridge, or in this case, the metaphor should be water under a log. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goat.
Barbara Henry.
Good evening, Chairman Kelly, Superintendent Constantino, members of the Board. My name is Barbara Henry, 141 Devon Road. I am a volunteer with the Theater Department at Lafayette High School. I am the scenic artist for the fourth year in a row. I know that this Board has toured the facilities at Lafayette recently, with the exception of Superintendent Constantino. And so you have seen the outdated and cramped quarters we, the production team, staff, and students, must operate in. Small stage, no areas to store costumes or set pieces, no area in which to build set pieces or paint them, or to store tools, paint, or wood. Costumes right now are crammed into the two small bathrooms offstage, making the bathroom and the costumes inaccessible. There is no outside access to the stage or ramp where wood and materials can even be brought onto the stage. We awkwardly haul things through the long and sometimes occupied cafeteria. We often build and paint set pieces out in the hallway. Lafayette is 44 years old, and the Theater Department, as well as the Athletic Department, are in dire need of updating. If the repurposing of James Blair becomes a reality, then Lafayette loses the use of the athletic facilities at James Blair, and there is less money in the pot for truly necessary renovations. Which brings me to the issue of repurposing James Blair. I've listened to all the pros and cons of this now controversial subject, and I am left with a distinct impression that the building of this fourth middle school is unnecessary, at least certainly not at this time. I mean, that is, it is not necessary, at least certainly not at this time. There are conflicting student enrollment projections. The new school is an expensive experimental design. It sounds like it will be a STEM school. The location is less than desirable, it will usurp the building's present use as an administration building, and we will need to build another. And James City County will have to pay back the now $26 million bond, leaving less money in the pot for truly necessary school improvements such as are needed at Lafayette. You know, I stand before you not as an adversary, but as an ordinary citizen engaging with my government, the people elected to represent me. But I am greatly disturbed by what I have heard at the last Board of Supervisor meeting of March 8th. Two supervisors clearly stated that teachers and parents were afraid to voice their opinions and concerns about school matters. Afraid! So I thought I'd ask around myself to see if this was true. In every case of all I asked, in no uncertain terms, I was told that yes, the teachers were afraid of this administration. Afraid to speak up about issues and concerns and student needs and feelings. I was told if it wasn't...
Thank you, Mrs. Henry.
Oh, all right. Thank you very much. John Magda.
Good evening, Mr. Kelly.
Evening.
The Board. John Magda, 2903 Richard Pace, North in the Berkeley District. Wonderful display from the students and teachers, and I want to note that Mr. Goggan from Clara Bird, this is the first time I've seen him in pants, other than his PE clothes. Wonderful man, very good choices. Tonight, real quick, a long-term effects on bullying. Did a Google search. Did on those words, "long-term effects on bullying." 8,600 results in .38 seconds. Long-term effects on bullying into adulthood, 594,000 in .59 seconds. Either way, a blink of an eye for a lifetime of trouble. We're all about, in this age, good middle age, King's College of London tracked 7,771 children born in 1958. They found that these children were more than likely to have depression, anxiety, and any long-term effects from bullying. Numerous studies have all pointed this out, including Dr. Tracy Cross, right here at William &amp; Mary. And, which leads us to a very scary thought that 15% to 20% of American students in grades K through 12 report being bullied at least once per week in a school. Once per week. By adolescents, 75% of students report they have been a victim of bullying, sometimes during their school career. That's, that's a lot. Of course, that all leads to isolation, anxiety, low self-esteem, and other concerns. Bulled boys are four times more likely to be suicidal. Let's hope we don't have that. Bulled girls are eight times more likely. Students who bully others are more likely to grow into violent adults. Those who are identified as bullied at age eight were six times more likely to be convicted of crimes by age 24. And five times more likely than bullies to be, have a serious criminal record by the age 30. Three out of five students who are identified in Bullies, grade six through nine, had one conviction by the age of 24. In closing, it's come to our attention that we've been monitored and followed as we attend my daughter's school. From the minute we entered school, we're being monitored, followed, and chased around, even during voting. And sir, I want to present that, that that really was very uncomfortable, being followed through the voting process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Magda.
Sandra Magda.
My husband's going to hand a couple of things out. I like, we have a motto, we like everyone to be on the same page, and we don't feel like everyone's been on the same page, so hopefully this will help everyone to know why we're here, and why everyone's sick of us. Someone said to me, "You're not here to collect more names for your Christmas list, are you?" Nope. The last word, someone wrote, "I am so tired of hearing from the family who is complaining of a bullying incident at a local elementary school. I too am a parent of two children at that same school. My family has only had stellar experiences with the teachers, main office staff, and administrators, and this family is acting as if every family is upset with the school. This family has made slanderous remarks about the administrators, and this needs to stop. My question is, when is our superintendent going to take charge and support the administrators? Not once have we complained about the teachers, that's why two of our children still attend the middle, the school that they're at. We don't have a problem with the office staff, and we don't have an administration problem, there's an administrator problem there." The first report we received, our, well, first, the pictures you have, that is our daughter, that's the little girl that you tell us every time you ignore our concerns that she's not worth it. She's eight, she was eight when this started, she's nine. The first report we received was an incomplete incident report. We asked for months for that report. It wasn't until we hired an attorney that we received a complete report. The report is backdated, and we know this because the date on the second report is dated before we even reported the incident. What this tells us is that this new report never existed before December 4th of 2015. It's all in your paperwork, just so you know. All documents in front of you have been submitted to the reporter at the Gazette. So I'm okay with everyone reading our legal information, our packet in there. The 32-page report is from our attorney. The one from your response from WJCC's attorney is also in there. They contain the agenda from the first meeting we had in July, an email from the principal at Warhills stating, "He received the incident report from CBB, a clear violation of FERPA." Your packet contains both our attorney's and your attorney's information. You also have a copy of one of the many notes our daughter has written and left around our home. "This bullying was not your typical bullying. He would whisper in her ear, he threatened her sisters if she said anything. He told her that he was watching her every day, every day. Had WJCC followed its own protocol, this child would have been suspended the second week of SOL testing. He was not."
Thank you, Mrs. Magda.
Petronadell.
Good evening, my name's Petronadell, I live at 106 Indian Circle. Good evening, Chairman Kelly, members of the Board, and Superintendent Constantino. I wish to speak to the issue of raising the members' pay a little bit, just carry it on to January. Let me first say that I support an increase. Some comment that school board members should be volunteering their time because of their love for children, and that their only responsibility is to meet twice a month. Maybe that's the case in many areas, but here we have a huge responsibility. We are asking them to support our children, our teachers, and our citizens. We want them to make wise and informed decisions, especially tough ones. In order for that to happen, our school board members need to spend many hours on research, speaking with people, attending meetings and classes. If you use some of the school board's voting decisions over If you use some of the school board's voting decisions over the past several years, you can see where some of them did their homework and others just listened and voted. Some asked lots of questions pertaining to the issue they were voting on, others didn't. Some came with additional information and researched alternatives or asked the tough questions, while others didn't. Some basically just reiterated what the superintendent proposed or suggested. Some spoke to issues that were important to the parents and students and citizens, while others sat silently. Some stuck to their vote, knowing they would probably be standing alone. It became very obvious to me which school board members really cared, went above and beyond, and in order for them to do that, they had to spend hours upon hours to be informed as possible. To speaking for myself, I did a rough estimate of how many hours I spent in the last two years on researching, doing interviews, attending meetings, speaking with parents, teachers, and citizens. I am one of those people that's always reading and asking questions, which leads to speaking with other people, getting their opinions and getting their thoughts. And of course, I had to fact-check as much as possible. None of this was just done in one day, in a week. Basically, it was daily. Sometimes just a few minutes, other days it was hours. So my rough estimate came to fourteen hundred hours in a year. Now, that's just me. I know many others that doubled or tripled that. Now, what do we expect from our school board members? In order for them to make those wise choices, how much time do we hope they will spend on each issue? Do we want them to do as much they can personally, or just rely on administration? Do we want them to speak with the parents? Do we want them to be, get the facts and get to the bottom of the issues? Do we want them to attend meetings and be informed? I don't think the majority of citizens realize the many issues we have. The problems many teachers have, parents and families that want and need their attention, students that don't know what to do and where to go. They don't understand how the school budget works. They don't realize how much of the tax money goes towards our schools. They don't even realize they have, they have input in that decision-making. They believe that what gets put in the paper, and they have no idea what doesn't get put in the paper. So they rely on the representative of the school board. A lot of the weight is carried on them. As a citizen, I expect my school board representatives to be diligent...
Thank you.
Can I just finish my one sentence?
One sentence.
Well, it's a short sentence.
Short sentence.
It's a good sentence. As a citizen, I expect my school board representatives to be diligent and do everything they can for our children. I expect them to put our children first. I expect them to put their personal feelings aside and do what's right, and I expect them to listen to and digest all the facts. Then and only then can they be effective school board members, and for that, I'm willing to support a pay increase.
Long sentence.
Judy Nisich.
Good evening. I'm a school bus driver for Williamsburg James City County, and I'm here to plead on behalf of my coworkers for support and discipline on the school bus. It is true, there is a national shortage of school bus drivers. Why not? We don't aspire to be school bus drivers when we grow up. It's an occupation that just happens to us, a job that happens to us, and one day we wake up and realize we've been here a while, and it's now a career. There doesn't have to be a shortage here in Williamsburg James City County. In our training, we are often told if you have X event, you take Y action and you'll get Z result. That is rarely the case here. Most school disciplinarians cannot even begin to wrap their minds around the fact that a K or even a twelfth grader student can disrupt the bus so badly that it endangers the life of everybody on the bus, the driver included. Several of our schools, or, at several of our schools, the disciplinarian says, "Oh, there are special circumstances." These are circumstances that we're never made privy to, and we also get a thing about, well, we can't suspend little Billy Joe Jim Bob, his parents will not bring him to school. We actually had a disciplinarian last year who said to a driver, "Don't bother writing the referral, just tell me what happened and I'll take care of it." We're doing our professional best to maintain control as we transport our very special and precious cargo. But sometimes when we call on our most disruptive student, he goes home and says, "Ah, the school bus driver's picking on us," picking on me, and that triggers a lot of calls to our office. We have excellent camera monitors on all of our buses now, but rarely does the disciplinarian ask to see the footage so that the problem can be accurately assessed and addressed. A student can use all of the obscenities, profanities, and slurs they wish with more than a little warning, but if in our moment of non-professional weakness, we actually say, "Shut up and sit down," we are called to the office, we are reprimanded, and maybe even sometimes a note in our file. On the occasion that we do get our referrals to the desks of the disciplinarians, it can take from one day to two weeks for any action to be taken, and this is action that we rarely get to know about. So we wait while the paperwork makes its way slowly through our Pony Express back to our office. And I got to tell you, in this day of instant messaging, old-fashioned faxing, and simple phone calls, it should never take this long. We're not asking for sweeping new regs. We're asking to have them adhere to the rules and regs that are listed in School Board Policy EEA-ACC. The climb up the pay scale here is painfully slow. We drivers are not unaware of how valuable our assets, our CDL, and what a valuable asset it is, but we're not losing these drivers just to private industry. We're actually losing them to neighboring school divisions. So we ask for your support, and let's please address something that we can do about getting this handled more quickly.
Thank you for all you do for our students and for their transport, and I...
Sir, I'm one, I've one of many, and I'm just simply a sub, but I, my heart bleeds for my coworkers who are here and who are contracted, who want to make a career here, and who are actually pained over the fact that they're leaving. They are leaving my kids, and we think of them that way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Patty O'Neill.
Good evening, Chairman Kelly, members of the board, Superintendent Constantino. I'm Patty O'Neill, and I live at two six four Sir Thomas Lunsford Drive in Holly Hills. I'm here to express my support for the fourth middle school project moving forward as planned. I currently have a seventh grader at Berkeley and a third grader who will enroll in school in the fall of 2018, when the new middle school is scheduled to open. So I'm a constituent of the schools, very invested in this decision. I also believe there are many in the community who also support the project and haven't been heard, and I've encouraged them to also use their voice and express their support. This project, to me, is about the future of our community and planning in a way that ensures our schools reflect an inclusive and engaged community. The project dates back to 2008. That's more than seven years of resources, time, and financial, which have already been committed to the new school. I recently spoke with a community member who served on the planning committee, and he stated they spent a year and a half discussing and planning the new middle school, and it was clear he was a little frustrated that it continued to be revisited and questioned. I absolutely recognize that twenty-six million dollars is a significant investment for our localities to make, but the project, if the project is delayed, has anyone considered how the cost may escalate if moved out several years, and can we afford such a cost? I also believe this project is about the future of our children and creating engaging learning environments that are safe, foster learning for the 21st century, and are free from distractions of overcrowded classrooms. Just a few weeks ago, we saw that Williamsburg is not immune to severe weather threats, and many were concerned about the safety of the students in trailers at our schools. The one-room schoolhouse that emerged in the late 1800s hasn't changed much. In most cases, it's a multi-room schoolhouse that hasn't taken into account how we prepare our students for a new economy focused around innovation. In my professional role, I've had the opportunity to visit some amazing schools in Silicon Valley and Southern California, designed to put wonder, creativity, and initiative at the heart of learning. These students were highly engaged, the teachers were inspired and fulfilled as they saw their students thrive in such an environment. Plans for the new middle school provide WJCC the opportunity to make this happen for our community. Finally, in my opinion, I believe this project is not about the opportunity to build an elaborate new central office. This is a interview expressed by many who oppose the project. When you consider the other anchor institutions and organizations in the greater Williamsburg area, corporate or public entities, you don't see extravagant facilities to house their executive leadership. I don't think there's evidence to believe our school division would pursue an option that isn't scaled to our community. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Thank you for serving our children. Thank you for serving my children.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Neill.
Roseanne Redden.
Good evening, School Board and Superintendent Constantino. I have an opposing opinion to the last speaker. In my lifetime, I have found that getting second opinions, or even third ones, on important matters is very wise and beneficial. If I have gone to a doctor and he recommends a surgery, I have consulted another doctor to get his or her second opinion on that surgery. When a dealership told me I needed a seven hundred dollar repair on my car, I thought that was a bit pricey, so I went to another car maintenance business and was told that the thing that I was told needed repairing was fine, but I did need another part, cost me sixty dollars. I firmly believe that this school board should be accepting alternate opinions about the repurposing of James Blair, which has been researched and reported by several citizens in James City County. These prove that the repurposing of the school is an unnecessary extravagance. Apparently, James Blair already has an annex which can accommodate, very nicely, two hundred and fifty students. Isn't that the number of students that has been stated to be the number of additional students that would cause the overcrowding of our schools? And for which the board is asking citizens to approve millions, I don't know, I've heard twenty, fifty, sixty, ninety million dollars for the project. One citizen has made a suggestion that James Blair, as it is in the current state, can be made into a magnet school, which sounds like a good additional and some very educational project, which could accommodate two hundred and fifty middle school students. The plan would add minimal cost to the budget of James City County and Williamsburg. Wasn't that the original purpose of that annex in the first place? This would solve the overcrowding problem and would enhance our district with a new program. Please, as a taxpayer in James City County, I am asking you to take time to reconsider, get second and third opinions that several citizens have presented at your board meetings and also at James City County Board of Supervisors meetings. Please take those second and third looks at the figures of students and numbers, other numbers, in your current plan for repurposing. Make darn sure that they are accurate before you put a shovel in the ground. The research for these and other opinions has, has already been done for you. You don't even have to do the research. It seems to be extremely factual, intelligent, well-researched, and it's sensible. Please don't jump the gun and build a necessary Taj Mahal that citizens will be paying taxes for, for years, and years, and years. Rather, I ask you to use our tax dollars for other projects, such as we mentioned before, like the Lafayette High School, and also the other schools which need just repairs. This would be good for our school district, our students, and the tax-paying citizens of Williamsburg and James City County. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Redden. Is that all the speakers we have tonight? Thank you. That takes us to the consent agenda. Eight point zero one, approval of minutes from the following meetings, February sixteenth and February nineteenth, nineteen twenty sixteen. Eight point zero three, personnel actions. Eight point zero four, approved release from compulsory attendance, case number R sixteen dash oh four. Eight point zero five, resolution R nine sixteen, V SBA Business Honor Roll. Eight point zero six, resolution R ten sixteen, The Month of the Military Child. Eight point zero seven, revision policy I I B E A G A B, Acceptable Technology System Use Policy. Eight point zero eight, retire policy G C K, Professional Staff Workload. Eight point zero nine, retire policy G C J, Professional Staff Time Schedules. And eight point one zero, retire policy G C L A, Professional Staff Visitations and Conferences. Can I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move the consent agenda as stated.
Have a second. Not going to restate that. Ms. Serza?
Ms. Cook? Aye. Ms. Hummel? Aye. Ms. Minor? Aye. Mrs. Taylor? Aye. Mrs. Young? Aye. Dr. Beers? Mr. Kelly?
Aye. Thank you. Nine point zero one, fiscal year 2017 operating budget. As a member of the, of the School Board of Williamsburg James City County, I acknowledge that I have an interest in the fiscal year 2016-2017 school budget because my wife is an employee of the WJCC schools. However, I believe that I am able to participate in the consideration of and vote on the budget fairly and in the public interest.
Mr. Chair, as a member of the School Board of Williamsburg James City County, I acknowledge that I have an interest in the fiscal year 2007 school budget because I am an employee of the Williamsburg Health Foundation. However, I believe that I'm able to participate in the consideration of and vote on fairly and in the public interest. Thank you.
I get a motion for approval of the fiscal year 2017 operating budget?
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the fiscal year 2017 operating budget as presented by the administration.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
We have some.
Mrs. Young?
Okay, I spoke with Ms., Ms... Okay, I spoke with Ms. Berta about the budget agreement that was reached between the House and the Senate concerning the two percent raise that is in the state budget, and I would like some information on how that will affect the salaries of our teachers.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Dr. Constantino, we have not seen the finalized numbers from the House or Senate. We've seen preliminary numbers. It does include a two percent salary increase for SOQ-funded teaching and support positions. Because we fund our school division higher than what is required by SOQs, which is minimum requirements, we don't have a way to go through a classroom and pick and choose which teachers and support staff are SOQ-funded and not. So we will receive two percent based on our local composite index, and what's teachers and support staff are SOQ-funded, but it will not fully support a two percent salary increase. However, it will help offset what we have in the proposed superintendent's budget.
Isn't the SOQ personnel, aren't those the teachers? Aren't all teachers considered SOQ-funded?
Ma'am, only a small portion of our teaching staff is SOQ-funded.
Special categories that are considered SOQ-funded and not others?
There are teaching staff members that are considered SOQ-funded, and it's, it's based on minimum requirements. There also are support positions that are covered under SOQs.
Can you give me any...
Support positions?
No, not, not support, teaching positions.
We don't identify a teaching staff member as SOQ-funded in the division, so we don't have a way to go through our division and figure out which teacher would be SOQ-funded. We fund at levels beyond SOQ, and I don't think we want a minimum level funding of school division for SOQs. And it's, it's not fair for staff to have to go through and identify who would be SOQ-funded and not, and that's, that's, that's not an equitable way to look at our teaching staff.
I'm not in disagreement about the equality. I do think people should be treated fairly and equally. However, I do have a question. When, when this bill is talking about teachers and support staff, I mean, how, in your, well, in your opinion, how does that affect, I mean, we're going to get a two percent, somehow that money's going to be allocated to the school division?
Based, based on the numbers that I've seen, it's approximately three hundred and eighty thousand dollars to help offset a salary increase for our staff. It's a small portion of what it takes to provide a two percent salary increase to our division.
Sure about how this works, and so, but thank you, thank you for your time.
Sure.
And I guess I'll continue researching it. Thank you.
Dr. Beers?
Yeah, I, I actually have a couple of general questions. I want to make sure I understand the language. I was looking at the cost centers for all the schools, and, and Ms. Berta, this, the superintendent maybe, probably, might be able to answer this better, but I'm, I'm, I'm going to ask you anyway, and we'll see, we'll see where it goes. My assumption is that when, when the principals are identified as managers for each, for their cost center for their school, that's what they're called, manager, the manager. What I want to know is, do they determine all of the allocations at their cost center, or are there allocation decisions that are made at central office?
They do not determine their staffing. We do staffing based on enrollment, but everything that is a non-staff category, they are involved in the process and bring forward areas that they feel like they need to support their school.
Okay, oh, okay, and then decisions are made whether, you know, they, you know, staff agrees, or they go up or down, or whatever it might be. Is that, would that be the case?
That's correct.
Okay. So, I guess what I, what I'm, what I'm trying... So I guess what I, what I'm, what I'm trying to understand is, I'm seeing some big increases in some areas, and I think I know what they are, but it's, you know, one of the things that I realize, because I've seen other budgets, there's very little narrative that goes along with a lot of the lines in schools and some of the other areas. And so I'm kind of left with, okay, I need an explanation. And I've been looking at cost centers, and I was looking at cost center 49, and my assumption, I'm assuming, because we're moving to a new middle school, that we're going to have an increase in staff development, that that's part of the reason for virtually doubling the category for travel for, from $30,000 in 2015 to $61,000 this upcoming year? But I don't know. Is that, can I, can I get some, get some help there?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Paula since that's her cost center.
Yeah, I just want to know, I think that's probably what it is, because my understanding most of that travel probably is for staff and teachers for professional development.
Yes, Dr. Beers, that includes professional development. We're going to be looking into project-based learning, and so we're going to be sending some of our teachers, along with some of our curriculum coordinators, out to learn about project-based learning. That also includes some of our itinerant teachers, so that is all lumped together in that particular line item.
That's what I thought. I just wanted, but I want to make sure, and I think that's, it's helpful, because I know one person isn't going to spend $61,000, and I, and I knew the cost center, I knew what was going on in there, but I wanted people to hear that that's, that's what we're using that money for. Okay, thanks. I guess that was, yeah, that was, you know, there's some other categories, but I think that's part of. One thing I did, I'm sorry, we didn't do that. I think it's also when we, and you and I have talked about this, when we combine salaries on a line and it says 1 FTE, I think it's really important to break that out so that people don't get any correct impression or understanding of that dollar figure.
We had that conversation at the last meeting, and we do intend to break that out so that it's very clear.
Okay, because I think that it's unfair to the cost center, and it's unfair to the administrator, because I realize, and I know, because we've talked about it, that a considerable amount of that money goes for summer school. I would like to know, for example, is it one person that's in charge of summer school? And if it is, what's the salary? And I know we hire teachers, correct?
Yeah.
To do summer school?
This is the whole administration of summer school and teachers.
Yeah, so I want to, I want to see how that's broken out. I think that's really important. I'm not going to, you know, it's not going to prevent me from supporting a budget, but I just think it's important, the more information we have about some of these numbers, I think it makes it easier to understand and also explain to other people. That's it. Thanks.
Mrs. Hummel?
I just wanted to kind of thank some, we've received some emails since the last meeting about background and explanations about longevity. And this is, for me, as a new board member, I'm asking questions not for the intention of, oh, I want to do away with longevity. I just need to understand how it works, how many people are affected, what's the bottom line, all those kind of things. So I do appreciate the emails that we received with the explanations of the history of longevity and, and the reasons for having the longevity, and then the whole, you know, the recession and this and that. But I just wanted to explain that, as far as I'm concerned, I'm asking questions, I'm not necessarily trying to go after a particular part of the budget. So I just wanted to voice that.
Sure, Dr. Beers.
I want to say the same thing, because I know we, we had an exchange, and I got confused, and I thought maybe you got confused, and then I realized, no, you probably were confused because I was confused.
No, I'm confused.
I fully under, yeah. As somebody said, you know, if you hadn't run out of the house quite as quickly as you did, I probably, I think I could have explained it to you a little better. But I understand what it is now. It's, it is a one-time, but it's included every year after that as part of their, you know, as part of their salary. But there is not a $7,000 increase every year. So I, yeah, I apologize for my own ignorance and not being exactly sure about what that was, but, and, you know, I supported it then, and, you know, I, I hope there is some way that we can keep our best, who've been here the longest, you know, do some things in the future. But I needed to say that as well. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Mrs. Minor?
Berta, thank you for all your work, and you answered the question tonight, so I'm going to vote to accept the budget as presented and proposed tonight, recognizing that we will be back here to make budget adjustments once the General Assembly, we understand the implications of the General Assembly and the county's financing of us. Let me say that going forward, my priority is to hold the compensation increase and fixing the salary scale, to hold that harmless in any adjustment we would make, and to hope that with the superintendent's staff, we could recommend adjustments that stay away from the compensation and any class size implications before any other initiatives. Just to say, I'm going to vote for the budget, and I appreciate all the work that all of you have done. I do also want to thank the staff who let us know about how longevity impacts them. It's important for us to understand that. But I'm supporting the budget tonight and the work that you've done to try and react to what we've been requesting, so thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Minor. Mrs. Young?
I just have a question. How, how are basic or base administrative salaries computed?
You ask.
For example, I mean, I'm looking at cost center 52, and I noticed in the actual budget, which is 48,381, and then for next year, budget 2000, I guess this year's, well, I'm not sure, budget 2016 is 51,000, and then budget 2017, it jumps to 104,000. I'm trying to understand how that figure was reached. I'm...
During, during last year's, or this current year's budget, 2016, we implemented the new learning lab, which required an additional half-time position to support that program. So that was an unbudgeted position in 2016, which would have been rolled into 2017 to incorporate what we actually are paying individuals to...
So is that a 1.5?
It is a 1. It went from a half-time to a full-time.
That's my question, I appreciate it.
Dr. Beers?
I want to reiterate what was said down at the other end of the day, and that is, I know we are going to, as Mary said, we are going to come back. We're going to have to deal with, you know, with whatever the state leaves us. But I also agree that the compensation package, I think, saving, saving the rate raises is, if we have to cut back on technology, I'd rather cut back on technology, because I, I think your people, your teachers, your personnel are irreplaceable in the sense that what they bring, what they bring to that classroom, and I, I really echo that, that, to me, that's the most important thing.
Ms. Cook?
I want to echo everyone else's thanks to the administration and to my colleagues for asking such good questions. It's been an educational process going through this budget and learning every step of the way, so thank you for your patience with us, Ms. Berta, we appreciate it. I do, especially. And like, like my colleagues up here, fixing compression remains a priority, and I hope that we're able to preserve that based on what comes back from the state and from the localities. I just want to remind everybody that we are required to present a budget of need, and I think we're doing that with this budget. Ms. Larson, at a recent James City County Board of Supervisors meeting, spoke eloquently about the need for the Board of Supervisors to trust us, to trust the school board regarding funding requests, and I think the reverse is true as well, and I think we need to trust the localities to fund as they can. We should request, and I think we are requesting, what this division needs, and work with the localities as they deliberate their financial priorities. I think this year in particular, it's important to do that because of the efforts of the Urban Crescent. Localities from Northern Virginia to Richmond to Virginia Beach have sent a message to the General Assembly that enough is enough. The state needs to stop strangling the localities and start reinvesting in education. The General Assembly did not hear that message this year, not to the extent that it needed to be heard, and as a result, we're getting less from the state, which is frustrating given that our enrollment is going up, and our student needs are going up as well, they're getting more complicated. So now we're in a position where the state is giving us less, and we need to, again, ask for more from the localities. If we back off from our needs out of deference to local funding partners than we do, everyone, most of all, our students, a disservice. So I'm glad we're asking, it looks like we're going to ask for what we need per the state code, even if we anticipate we may not get it. If we don't get what we need, at least we then can quantify the gap and share that very real number with the state. We're all in this together, and I know we share the same vision of pursuing excellence and championing the success of all students. So let's ask for what we need and obtain our vision. That's what I got to say.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. I guess since being the old guy on the dais up here, I learn something new every, every budget cycle that we go through, and I thank you and the rest of the administration for the work that you do putting this budget together, and your patience in answering our questions. That's, it's, you know, a $138 million enterprise, there's a lot of moving parts to it, and a lot of responsibility for that, so I appreciate the good work. It was asked earlier about SOQs and what SOQs are, and there's not a school system in the state of Virginia, Commonwealth of Virginia, that runs their school system to an SOQ level. It's simply the teacher ratios, the principal ratios, all of that is not where any locality, no matter the means of that locality, wants to run their school system. So that, I know there were some questions about that tonight, and it actually took me a couple of years to get a minor grasp on that, so I can understand how board members would be kind of confused about what SOQs are and how those get funded. So, you know, it's important to, it's important to, when the governor talks about 2% for SOQs and 3% for state employees, they are not funding every teacher in our school division to 2%. That's not, that's, I think it's roughly a little over half, I think, is...
I don't know, right off the top of my head.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not close to 100% of our teachers or, our SOQ positions are accounted for in that. So that money isn't there for every teacher, and so, and so the locality has to, has to do what they can to make up the, make up the difference. And I have said many times from the dais that the problem, the problem with public education cannot, is not on Mounts Bay or Lafayette Street, it's in the General Assembly, and the, and the cuts that they have and their lack of funding for, and prioritization of public education. So, once again, I thank, I thank you and the rest of the administration for all the good work you've done in putting this budget together. We have to approve this by the 1st of April, goes to the Board of Supervisors, we have discussions there, and then it comes back, and we make our final adjustments and have our budget for next fiscal year. So, Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And my lengthy remarks, I forgot to thank whoever turned on the air conditioning.
See Mr. Lieber back there? I'm sure it wasn't him. He's turning everything off everywhere he goes.
A ditto on that.
With that, it's been moved and seconded for approval of the fiscal year 2017 operating budget? You don't have to call the question, because I'm asking Mrs. Serza to take the vote.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Minor?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye, thank you. 9.02, award invitation for bid number 16-8678, Matthew Waley Elementary School Auditorium HVAC replacement to ZBZ Associates in the amount of $192,333. Can I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve item 9.02, award invitation for bid number 16-876, Matthew Waley Elementary School Auditorium HVAC replacement to ZBZ Associates in the amount of $192,333.
For a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Mr. Snipes, since you're there, do you have anything you want to say? Any questions from board members? Look at the podium. It's been moved and seconded for award invitation for bid number 16-8678, Matthew Waley Elementary School Auditorium HVAC replacement to ZBZ Associates in the amount of $192,333. Ms. Serza?
Ms. Minor?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye. Thank you. The 9.03, award of contract for request for proposal number 16-8684, construction management services for James Blair Middle School to MBP in the amount of $558,300.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of item, agenda item 9.03, RFP number 16-8684, award of contract for request for proposal, construction management services for James Blair Middle School to MBP in the amount of $558,300.
Is there a second?
May I make a comment?
Is there a second first?
Second.
Ms. Cook, you made the motion, your floor?
Yeah, I have a question and then a comment, I think. First, Mr. Snipes, how are you? How are you doing?
How are you doing?
Can you tell me which CIP year this comes from, which adopted CIP? Do you know? Yeah, thank you, sorry.
Funding for this project is in the 2015 CIP.
And Mr. Chair, I have some comments I'd like to make about the, if you'll allow me, about the middle school in general, given that we've heard so much about it as of late.
The, the topic on the floor is the contract for the, for the construction management services, and so that would be more appropriate in the board members' comments tonight.
Okay, thank you.
But I have some comments.
Mrs. Young?
Okay, this project was initiated before the five new members of this board took their seats. These new members did not participate in the discussions that led up to this point, and then we're up to the point here of the construction management contract. There are a number of questions whose answers would be of great assistance in our deliberations and decisions. Now, I've been at many board...
Questions about the construction management services contract?
Yes, this is still about that.
Okay.
Okay, now, I've been at many board meetings, and I've heard from many members of the community, including the members tonight, who came and have spoken for and against this project. And I don't have the feeling that these questions have been addressed by this, by the board, and I have not seen any, seen any answers coming forth. We're being asked to approve spending in the amount of $558,000 on another step in this project, and I have a list of questions I suggest the board needs answers to before we can act responsibly on this request. And I'm passing those questions out. If you'll just take one, and you can pass it all the way down here. I have them, thank you. And these questions really need to be answered, I think, to everybody's satisfaction on this board, and I understand that the Future Think numbers are cited as for justification for the new middle school.
The Future Think numbers aren't, aren't about the construction management contract.
But they, but they affect the progress of this project.
Yeah, the motion on the floor is for the contract for the...
And I understand that, and I am, I'm not withdrawing my, my right to speak right now. Future Think numbers show that we need additional space for 165 to 180 additional students by 2020, and I would like it answered to the board, how these Future Think numbers substantiate the need for a school that will house 600 students. The annex at James Blair has a capacity of 250 students. What steps would need to be taken to make it a home for, for these students? And this all needs to be answered before we go ahead and vote on this. Could the annex be used for alternate edge?
Are you going to go through all 19...
I would like to.
Those aren't really pertinent to the construction management contract.
But they are, because if we go ahead and approve the contract for this without these questions being answered, this board, this new board, is moving forward on a project that we are going to be held accountable for. We have the, we... that we are going to be held accountable for. We have the necessity to be open and transparent with our constituents. We have the need to make sure that everybody understands how we got to this decision. And I'm opposed to going forward with granting a contract to the next step until these questions have been answered fully. And I brought this up during the last board meeting, and it's in the minutes. And I would like very much to have the questions answered.
Okay, I noted.
And I hope Thursday has this, I hope.
Yeah, she will. Any other questions from board members? Ms. Taylor?
I have some general knowledge questions about it that might help everyone out with a little more understanding. So who was on the RFP panel?
There was administrators on it, as well as a member of the JCC purchasing.
And how many people comprised the panel?
That comprised four people.
Four. And have we used MBP in the past?
Projects include-
And is MBP in any way related to the architectural firm that we're working with?
What is your, what do you mean by related?
Do they have any type of prior working relationship?
I can ask. Robertson is also-
Mr. Snipes, make sure you get into the microphone.
Yes. Mr. Robertson's here. He can possibly ask that question.
I do believe that they have worked together at least on one of the projects in the Beach area, but beyond that, I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from board members about the construction management? Dr. Beers?
Yeah, I'd just like to comment on that were made by members of the public. Somebody made a very strong case that we need to approve other opinions. And it's my understanding is you listen to other opinions, and then you decide which opinion or which set of facts are the ones that are most accurate for you. We keep going around and around with this, different numbers, different years. We've been working on this for eight years.
Yeah, Dr. Beers, we're on the construction management contract, so.
All right.
Ms. Minor?
I call the question?
After Ms. Minor speaks, you may.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. Really, thank you for sharing the RFP and helping me remember and understand the process and criteria. And I have to say, Ms. Taylor did a great job of asking all the other questions I had, including the question of whether they had contracted with anybody else previously. But I did, you did report last month there were seven people who had responded to the RFP. I'm assuming that it wasn't included because it was non-responsive?
No, I said about seven. I wasn't-
Oh, you weren't, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Hummel?
This was in our board documents, right? The whole RFP, we had the copy of it with the rationale for all of the, you know, why that firm was chosen, the whole, all of that.
We gave you evaluation criteria as well as the-
Right, okay. So I feel very comfortable with the selection that you guys made.
It's been moved and seconded for award of contract for request for proposal number 16-8684, construction management services for James Blair Middle School to MBP in the amount of $558,300. Ms. Serza?
Mrs. Young?
No.
Dr. Beers?
Yes, aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Minor?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
No.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye. Brings us to 9.04, award purchase of materials and services for the security camera system upgrade to Office Pro Technologies in the amount of $108,153. Is there a motion?
I move agenda item 9.04, purchase approval for the security camera system upgrade.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? I think we had good discussion on this at the work session with no comments from the board members. It's moved and seconded for award purchase of materials and services for the security camera system upgrade to Office Pro Technologies in the amount of $108,153. Ms. Serza?
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Minor?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye. That brings us to 9.05, which was added tonight, purchase request for Title I supplementary literacy intervention materials in the amount of $73,262.63. Is there a motion?
Yeah.
Dr. Beers moves?
I move that we approve the request for Title I supplementary literacy intervention materials in amount of $73,262.
$63.00. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Once again, this was discussed at our work session. Have no comments from the board members. It's been moved and seconded for approval of, for purchase request for Title I supplementary literacy intervention materials in amount of $73,262.63. Ms. Serza?
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mrs. Minor?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye. That brings us to 9.06, which is the financial report and monthly bills and payroll, which was pulled from the consent agenda. Can I have a motion for approval of the financial report and monthly bills and payroll?
I move the approval of financial report of monthly bills and payroll.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Minor?
Yep. Good evening, Ms. Verda, again. I really have two questions. In looking over it, over the financial reports, I see that our revenue for Eastern State Mamarimac seem to be way behind in our expenses. What do we anticipate will happen, and what's the reason for that gap?
Process for requesting reimbursement for those two programs is that we request them quarterly. So unlike our federal grant programs where we do those monthly, we do request those quarterly. We are looking into seeing if we can transition to monthly, because that was the practice that has been done since we held those programs in our system.
And the other, it's a similar question. Food service is self-sustaining, and I noticed that, once again, there is a significant difference between revenue and expenses. My presumption is that USDA is not the quickest to reimburse?
February's report does not include federal reimbursements for January and February, nor does it include the Head Start reimbursement for December through February. So next month's report should be reflective of those numbers. It's just a timing issue. By the time we have to do the reporting and when they have to close out to process the federal reimbursement.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Young?
One of the things that is not included in the financial report is the CIP, how they're progressing. That's correct, right?
That's correct.
Okay, I would appreciate a monthly report on school board CIP projects and expenditures compared to the approved budget. I mean, I know there are several projects underway, and I would just like to see how, A, how those are progressing, how the money has been spent so far, and where that budget is, and if there will be a shortfall, or if, I guess you can't call it a long fall if there'll be somebody-
It's over.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? It's been moved and seconded for approval of the monthly financial report and monthly bills and payroll. Ms. Serza?
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Minor?
Aye.
9.07, can I get a motion for the retire of policy GDC compensatory leave?
Mr. Chair, I move item 9.09 to retire policy GDC compensatory leave.
Thank you. Said that. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Ms. Minor?
I'm going to vote for the retirement, retiring of this policy, because I know the compensatory time is not something that is used under labor standards any longer. My concern was the one I stayed at the last meeting. I have two scenarios. And we have exempt employees who cover the roads, you know, from midnight till 5:00 in the morning, who, to make sure we can open or not open our schools. Or we have folks who are writing grants and completing financial reports or completing budgets, who work well beyond what people see as their regular work time. And when I asked the question about how do the supervisors then manage that, and you said it's on a case by case basic. And I'm wondering if in the Human Resources handbook, there's a standardization so that we don't have people getting variance, too much variance in how that issue is treated.
Sure. You know, in the guidance I've given in the past to different either principals or different managers, is make sure they're consistent amongst your staff. But we can come up with more guidance and clearer for that.
I don't want anything to be that unflexible, but also something standardized. Thank you for that.
Sure. Any other discussion? It's been moved and seconded to retire policy GDC compensatory leave. I got it. Ms. Serza?
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Minor?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye. Brings us 10.01, board members' comments. Are there any comments from board members this evening? Ms. Taylor?
I want to say that I thoroughly enjoyed participating in Read Across America, and I appreciate interacting with the students at both Matthew Waley and Matoka. It was great, and I look forward to more events like that in the future.
Thank you. Ms. Hummel?
I'm going around if you- Okay, I'll speak. Well, in my continuing effort to learn more about this school system that I'm a school board member of, I visited Bright Beginnings with Ms. Cook. And I wanted to thank Renee Dino, or is it Dino?
Dino.
Dino, for her wonderful explanation of how Bright Beginnings works for our, the children in our school district. It's a wonderful, wonderful program, and I'm trying to figure out how it works, and Head Start, and CDR, and how it all blends together. So I really appreciated that explanation. I also received a great tour by Amy Stan of JB Blatton. So just a fantastic facility over there, and I really appreciated the opportunity to see that. I also toured Jamestown High School with Dr. Warley and Ken Edwards, the AD, and another fabulous, fabulous facility that I am super proud to be, to have that facility in the WJCC school system. I hope people realize when I champion Lafayette High School and I champion the need for improvements at Lafayette High School, that it doesn't mean that I'm not super proud of War Hill and Jamestown High School. I think those facilities are great. I'm so proud that we have facilities like Jamestown, and I just wanted to say that. Also saw the Stryker Building, and I'm looking forward to maybe some of our meetings being held there next year. Maybe it'll be a little cooler-
[laughing]
-under the spotlight. Also, I wanted to thank Ms. O'Neill for bringing up some of my thoughts. I had been really thinking, as a school board member, researching and everything about the fourth middle. I have gone back to the thanks for the school administration for putting all of the information in one convenient place on the website. That's great. You can see the whole timeline. You can see the process that we went through. And I want to support the school members that went before me, that looked at all of this information and evaluated it, and decided to go for supporting the fourth middle that I believe that we need for the children in our community. So I just want to go on record for saying that I appreciate the long timeline of this fourth middle. And I also appreciate hearing differing opinions. It's, I appreciate hearing all the opinions. Please respect my opinion and the vote that I will be making to support the fourth middle as well. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Ms. Minor?
Well, back on the school board a brief period of time, and last week I had an opportunity to see some of the wonderful things that we have. So the first is my advertisement for Erase the Need. Pamela Frazier, the coordinator of Erase the Need and our Title I outreach person, spoke to my women's group, the Serapis International of Williamsburg. And I have to say that my members were impressed by the breadth of Ms. Frazier's effort and the community support that she has garnered and the number of children and families she's serving. We're really lucky to have such a dedicated person. I also told her that I would advertise that she's looking for volunteers to assist her with, assist her over there behind Centerra Hospital with few distribution, her backpack program, and the bed distribution. Then I had a wonderful opportunity to see a good man, Charlie Brown, at Hornsby Hawks. And I have to say, Ms. Marshburn and Ms. Darnone did a fabulous job getting all of those young people who did the set design and the lighting design and the soundboard, as well as all the performers and the dancing and the ensemble. I personally liked the chorus of Woodstock's. But it was a great, great opportunity, and I'm so proud to be in a division that supports the arts the way they do. And finally, I had a unique opportunity that I don't really have a little graphic to show, to attend the James City County Neighborhood Forum to talk about the strategic plan. And thank you, Dr. Constantino, to being a volunteer and participating in that strategic planning process. It was well-attended by a diverse group of homeowners and HOA people. It was well-marketed and organized by Jody Puckett and LaTreta Branch from James City County. It's really a wonderful vehicle about, to learn about the direction of James City County. It would be my hope that we might begin a similar outreach activity through our talented communications office. And that's it for tonight.
Ms. Young?
Thank you. Okay, first of all, I want to just say that I enjoyed my visit very, very much to Berkeley Middle School with the principal, Amora McHale. I enjoyed going from classroom to classroom. I also enjoyed noticing that behind the school, there was 20-plus acres of unused land, which would have been great for expanding. Also, I enjoyed the food festival that was held this last Friday, I mean, Saturday, at War Hill High School. And I want to thank Jane Haney and Pam Deenan for putting all that effort into that. That was a lot of fun. And then I'm just going to go back to my mantra about governance and accountability. In 1976, during the 200th Bicentennial, there was a play that was put out. It was called 1776. And in there, there's a song. It's called "Is Anyone There? Does Anyone Care?" And that's kind of how I feel about this project, about James Blair. I hear, I've heard lots of questions. I haven't heard all the answers. And unfortunately, while I appreciate the efforts from the previous school board and all the people and my colleagues, I do appreciate their opinion. I object to the fact that we don't want to take the time to answer these questions. They're important. They're important to the fact that the Board of Supervise just authorized, borrowing $26 million from the EDA for funding this project. This project, this is only the first stage. This is not a complete project. This is only $26 million. And they have circumvented a bond referendum. They're going to borrow the money without talking to the taxpayers, without allowing the taxpayers to vote on this. And if it was subjected or submitted to the taxpayers, then I would be more willing to listen to this. But until I feel like the taxpayers have had a say in this, I really feel that we need to think seriously about how $26 million is being spent. That's a lot of money, folks. I'd like that much in my pocket. And I feel like that this project has gone forward. I've heard, at the board meetings I've been to, people get a chance to talk. I don't see anything but press the pedal to the metal, and we keep going forward without addressing these concerns. And so with that, I will close my remarks tonight. I do appreciate all the efforts of people that have gone before me and this board. But I feel like there's many, many unanswered questions that need to be answered, I see. And I would have liked them answered before we decided to pay another firm a half a million dollars. Maybe that's nothing to anybody else, but to some people, that's quite a bit of change. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Dr. Beers?
First of all, I would really like to thank Dr. Warley and Ken Edwards for squiring both of us, Julie and myself, to look at the, not just the athletic facilities out at Jamestown, but also the theater facilities. And then last Friday, I had a chance to tour War Hill's- War Hill's athletic and theater facilities and I thank Dr. Carroll and Dan Mullins for that. I, I echo Ms. Hummel's concern about Lafayette. I know it's an older school. It can never be like Jamestown and, and War Hill because of that, but I think there's an equity issue here and I think if we can work together with the county, we might figure out a way, I hope, to, to solve some of those space issues out there. I also had a very enjoyable time when I left the card in there because I forget what, what monster, I forgot what creature I was, but when I read Across America, I, I was at Matoka Elementary School. I want to thank Amy Moser for inviting me out there and Anna Matthew Whaley, Wendy Lucy invited me over there. And I would like to also come back to the middle school and sort of rephrase some of the things that I started to say and I sort of misstepped and I, I appreciate the fact that I need to back away from that. But I would like to say that again, is that there, there have been different opinions, different sets of information, different sets of numbers, some generated by the district, some generated by very well-meaning people in the community. And, and as Ms. Hummel said, I hope you would respect my ability to weed through, weed through, weed through, weed through the weeds.
Weed through the weeds.
I have looked at virtually every set of numbers. This thing has been going on for eight years and many of the very same questions that are being asked now were asked then and were answered. It has, we have spent countless hours on this. I do think that this is the right time and the right kind of school for our students as we go forward. But I will also let everybody know that the board will continue to be very vigilant. Even though we've hired a construction management company, there are elements in that contract that we will make sure are followed. For example, I have still not received all of the, I've received the suggestions for value engineering. I have not received cost-saving figures for all of those. There are some big ones in there and that's part, it was like the very first responsibility of that management company. And if I don't get it before I talk to them, I'm certainly going to get it from them because I, I sincerely believe there are some ways of saving some significant dollars without losing the, the nature of that school and, and what the intentions are to use it. So with that, I conclude very much.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to thank, hearing, I'd like to just acknowledge that we heard from bus drivers today. I appreciate that. They're a really huge part of our children's educational experience and so I appreciate gaining that perspective. I also wanted to say that I went to the March of the Lions, this, ran into Mrs. Young there, and the strawberry carrot smoothie is really good. I strongly recommend it. So I encourage anyone to, to try that when you're at a high school. It's pretty amazing stuff. But I too would like to touch on the fourth middle and explain why I support the board-approved plan at James Blair. I support it largely because multiple boards and multiple administrators have supported this project and no evidence has been shared with me that leads me to believe that all those people were wrong. Yet, arguments against the project persist. And when I think about arguments against the fourth middle related to money, I understand it. It's a lot of money and no one has a lot of extra money lying around. However, Mr. Hill has been clear that James City County has the funds to support the operation of the fourth middle once it's open. And good financial planning has allowed for that and I'm grateful and appreciative to the county for that. So I think we should acknowledge that. There are those who are concerned about the ongoing impact of the cost of educating our kids and, and they're spot on. It's not clear that James City County's organic revenue growth can support the cost of educating our kids in the long run. We're not alone in that. Together with the Urban Crescent, we must continue to make our case to the state that the General Assembly is choking the localities. And education must be a state priority and we can no longer tolerate them pushing the cost onto localities who can ill-afford it. When I think about the arguments against the fourth middle related to the enrollment projections, I simply disagree. Our middle schools are full. We need the space today. When the new school is built, we'll have excess capacity for a little while. That's how it works. And I think Mr. McGlinnan spoke about that at the last James City County Board of Supervisors meeting and I think he was, I think his analysis was correct. However, we can look at James City County's finances all day long or we can look at enrollment projections all day long, but both of those seem a little myopic to me. In addition to looking at specifics related to this school division, I think we should also look around us and see where we are in line with our peers and where we're an outlier. With that in mind, here's what I see. We are above average in performance. In fact, we're in an elite group of divisions that are fully accredited. We are below average in cost per pupil compared to divisions in the state. Yet, we're putting a larger number of kids in our schools compared to like-sized divisions in the state and/or our Region Two schools. Even if James Blair were open today, we would be putting more kids on average in our schools than our other comparable divisions. Our division's growing. The overcrowding will not go away and trailers are not sufficient remedy. When the tornado warning happened recently, my first thought was about the students and teachers in the trailers at our schools. Running from a trailer into a school during a lockdown situation is not ideal and our students deserve better. I think Mr. Hippel spoke eloquently about that the other day. So that, that concludes my remarks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. I would also like to add to Mrs. Taylor's comments about Read Across America Day. I was at Stonehouse and Matoka. I always enjoy the, the character parade at Stonehouse and actually, I'm sorry, it's Matthew Whaley. And I'm sure I entertained the students at Matthew Whaley with my version of Fox on Socks. If you've ever read that one, it's, it's interesting. I'd also thank the bus drivers for coming out tonight. For, for the majority of our students, the bus drivers begin our students' day and they end it every day. And they, they provide a great service to our, our school division and our community as well as all the rest of the operational staff. And this school board is concerned not only about our teaching staff, but about all of the employees that are at WJCC. Before we meet again, we'll, we'll have been through spring break. Enjoy the, hope that teachers enjoy, teachers and students all enjoy their break, get a, get some time away from the classroom and gear up for the completion of the new year, completion of the school year. Our, our spring musicals at our high schools are in full, are in full practice mode. Ms. Miner talking about the, the performance at Hornsby. I think the other middle schools have those too, but if you go to the musicals at our high school, you, you will not be disappointed if, if form holds. And I went to Dancing with the Williamsburg Stars the other night and there was a performance by the Lafayette, the Lafayette actors and who will, of their, what are they doing? Wizard of Oz. So the Wizard of Oz. And that was wonderful and I'm looking forward to attending that. I'd also like to thank the DJ students that came tonight and spoke and, and I'm impressed how they said Constantino. It's always impressive. Yeah, for a, for a first grader. And, and also Jenny and, and her handler for volunteering their time in the schools. Just another example of the, the great support this community gets from, from the citizens of the community and how that makes a meaningful and important difference in our high schools. There was a speaker before who talked about all of us who, who toured Lafayette and said Dr. Constantino hadn't. I can assure you, Dr. Constantino is very familiar with the, with the facilities at Lafayette and all the rest of our schools. And I have walked many of those with him myself. I'm just, I'm not going to add a lot about the fourth middle school. I've, I've been on this board since 2010 and it seems to have been the only discussion we've had, only topic we've had that's recurred through all six years. But what I, one thing I will say is, you know, talking about the need, when we opened this fourth middle school at James Blair, there, all four of our middle schools will be very close, if not at, ninety percent capacity. And what that really should do is just scare the community. Because how much longer is it going to be before I come and ask for trailers? I, I, like I said, I was up at Stonehouse for Read Across America Day. Within sight of Stonehouse, there are houses going up. Stonehouse is not built out. There's workforce housing that's going to go somewhere on Centerville Road. There's apartments going to Route Five and 199. I think there's some building in Newtown, Quarter Path. There's, there's building all over this community. This community is growing. As a result of its growing, we need schools, we need fire departments, we need police departments, we need parks. There's a lot of things that go into having the community that we all want to be a part of and that we all want to live in. Schools is just, is, is a piece of that, but it's an important piece of that. It's an important piece of the fabric of any community. So the, the fourth middle school, the debate of whether it's needed or not is, is, I just don't think, I don't see a lot of validity to that. It's, it's, this, this community is growing. We just look around and we can see that we need, we need the school. Brings us to upcoming meetings. Dr. Constantino, Mrs. Cook and I have been invited to the Board of Supervisors meeting work session next week to discuss the fourth middle school. It will not be an official meeting. All the board members are obviously welcome to attend, but Mrs. Cook and I and Dr. Constantino will, will be there at their request. There are next series of meeting, NSBA Annual Conference in Boston, April ninth through eleventh. We have a closed session at Room 402 in James Blair on April 12th at six o'clock, followed by a work session at six thirty, also in James Blair. April 15th, we will be on a school board training and retreat at the VSBA offices in Charlottesville. We have a closed session on April 19th at six o'clock here at Building F and a regular meeting on April 19th at six thirty to follow that also here at Building F. And with that, I thank, I thank the administration and their, for their support tonight. I thank the, all the board members for the work that you've put in, the questions that you've asked, your preparation and all the good work. So without objection, we are adjourned.